Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
No move.
Motion made, second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please take the roll.
Councilman Lee, here on cycle.
Here.
Yes.
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 Yes. Is there a motion to seal the minutes of executive session?
No move.
No move. Motion made, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please take the roll.
Councilman Lee, yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Okay. I now call this meeting of the Cranston City Council to order at this time --
Oh, you're doing it right.
At this time would ask everybody to turn off their cellphones. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Here.
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 Present.
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 President.
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 President. At this time will you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands for the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time I'm going to turn the meeting over to Vice President Farina. I have a personal problem and I have to go see my wife in the hospital. So, Councilman, Vice President Farina.
Poor John. That stinks. I know.
Good evening. Under public acknowledgements, we have Boy Scouts of America, Cranston, Rhode Island Troop 22 in the house this evening. Councilman Botts.
Thank you, Vice President. It's always a pleasure. This is one of the best things about being on the council is being able to present a citation to the youth of Cranston, especially when they make Eagle Scout. And I was doing a little bit of research on being an Eagle Scout and I came across one thing that was quite striking is that only 2 percent of those involved in scouting actually attain the rank of Eagle. And you have to achieve 21 merit badges, which requires a lot of perseverance and a demonstration of honor and leadership. And it teaches about giving back to the community, which is very, very important, especially in this day and age. I've known Anne Marie and Dan Nelson and Joshua and Jacob since they've been involved with the Little League down at Budlong Pool. And they have to be extremely proud tonight. And of course, the city of Cranston is also proud. And as representatives of residents of Cranston, the city council would like to present Jacob and Joshua Nelson with a commendation or citation from the city for their honorable achievement. And --
Being a former Boy Scout and Eagle Scout myself, I say congratulations to the both of you. It's a good honor and I was proud of when I did it, so proud of both of you gentlemen for doing it too. Any other public acknowledgements or commendations?
There being none, I close that portion of the docket.
Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on docketed items? Please limit your speaking time to four minutes.
Richard Tomlin's 400 Farmington Avenue. When I hit the agenda, all I saw on the agenda was the discussion about the police from '12, '13, '14, '15, '16, '17. But I understand you're also taking a final vote on the teachers' contract tonight. Am I correct? Yes. Well, obviously, I think that's been pretty well washed and I'm sure with all the discussions on it, that all the work that's been done previous, that -- and I think it does a good job and I think it's an honorable one, and I would encourage you to vote for it. On the police contract or situation, I know very little. And the reason is because there's very little information out there, but going back to '12, '13, '14, I guess that's the previous contract and then you'll have to come up with a new contract.
Mr. Tomlin, the police contract is not on the docket this evening. We had an executive session to discuss the police contract. The police contract is not on the docket this evening. It was on the executive session. So if you'd like to speak on it, you can get up during the session where we have open talk.
Sure, sure, I will. All right, I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussions or comments from the public on any docketed resolutions? There being none, I close that portion of the meeting. Public Works Committee, Councilman Lucino.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This matter came in front of the regularly scheduled October Public Works Committee meeting with a positive recommendation.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
There being a motion, a second. Any discussion?
No, let's --
There being no discussion, clerk please take --
Councilman.
Oh, sorry, Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you. I just want to make sure you're on the pastory lease?
Nine dash fourteen dash oh five, Councilman.
I'm sorry. That's -- I'm sorry, the landfill. Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Any further discussion?
It's okay. That's fine.
There being none, clerk please take the roll.
Councilman Lee? Yes.
Councilman Stiches? Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Sandoval?
Yes.
Councilman Seale?
Yes.
Councilman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Duff?
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to Ordinance Committee, Councilman Paul Arquette.
Thank you, Vice President Farina. Yes, I have one item on tonight's docket. Nine dash fourteen dash oh one, ordinance and amendment of Title 10, Chapter 32 of the Code of the City of Cranston, 2005, entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic: No Parking Yeoman Avenue. I believe this was presented by Councilman Santa Maria, so I'd like to say a few words.
Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Motion to approve, second. Under discussion, Councilman Santa Maria.
I worked on this, Mr. Vice President, with Ken Mason from the administration and actually Maria Wall helped out too with the drafting. So there is a traffic engineer report that gives a negative report, but I don't know, I'm getting a mixed signal here because Kenny worked on it with me and okayed it.
Any further discussion on the ordinance?
Mr. Vice President, if I may?
Oh, through the chair.
The Director of Public Works had worked on this, but by ordinance it still has to go to the traffic safety, where he had a negative recommendation, but -- thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Any further discussion? Councilman Lucino.
Yes, Director Barone, can you kind of elaborate on that? It has to go to the traffic safety officer or department or --
That's correct. You could have the Public Works Director help you draft and, you know, help you, you know, draft the ordinance and build the ordinance, but even if he helps you, that doesn't mean that he's making that recommendation. He's doing that at the request of the council. It still has to go through traffic safety.
So who would that be?
That's Steve Mulcay.
Councilman Lucino, you all set?
Yeah, for now.
Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, Vice President Farina. Regardless whether there's a recommendation or not, if the council member feels that there's a need for this legislation, if the constituents on the street feel there's a need, the council can pass this and then it's up to the mayor. If the mayor agrees with the traffic engineer, he can veto it, but we perceive it as a need and I'm ready to pass this. Thank you.
Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I just wanted to let everybody know that the reason we're doing this is because the overnight parking down at the bottom of Yeoman Avenue is blocking any type of vehicle from coming up, including safety and rescue. The police have looked at it. I've talked to the police. They agree that there needs to be something done. It's 24/7. Some vehicles don't move for two weeks. So the only way to get their attention is to put no parking signs. So that's the reasoning behind this. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Yes, Vice President Farina. My interpretation of what the charter and the code states is that the council can't pass a traffic ordinance, but only if it impacts the immediate health and safety of the Cranston residents. So I think there has to be a finding of that before this is passed, over the fact that there is no traffic recommendation right now.
Through the chair, to the -- well, through me, to the administration. He's not approving it. I mean, he's not denying it, he's just not approving it. So we can still pass it without his opinion. So any -- Councilman Stiches.
I have a question for Councilman Santa Maria.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Is there a problem with rescue and safety vehicles going up Yeoman Avenue that would represent a problem for the health and safety of residents?
You took the words right out of my mouth, Councilman. It is a very steep -- if you know the hills off of the bike, they're very steep, probably a 45-degree angle. And to be able to maneuver normally without cars there is tough enough. So they're just too close to the corner.
Follow-up question. Does it ever snow on Yeoman Avenue?
I think it's a vortex. I've never received snow.
Yes, it does. And I'm guessing that if those cars have popped out there, the plow can't get up or down Yeoman Avenue. So yeah, I would guess that was a very good observation, Councilman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Santa Maria.
Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Through the chair to Councilman Santa Maria, you're suggesting we need more tickets written in that area? Is the overnight parking a real problem or?
Jokes and jokes and jokes.
No, no, but I'm serious in the sense that he said overnight parking was a problem. I just --
The administration did send the police down there and they agreed that there was a problem. So I think I did all my homework on this one, Councilman.
I mean, do you think that enforcement is an issue or you just need to put this --
I agree enforcement is an issue, but they can't be on Yeoman Avenue 24/7. So I'm trying to -- I'm figuring this might be an easier way to enforce rather than --
Rather than spending the money on the label.
Spending money on having a policeman down there 24/7.
Councilman Botts.
Thank you, Vice President. You're talking about where you -- through the chair to the sponsor. You're talking about Yeoman Ave, where it meets Plainfield Bike?
That's correct, Councilman.
Well, I'm looking at it now on Google Street View and you've got two cars that are trying to get through there and it looks like a pretty narrow section. So if a car is parked there, you would have great stress in trying to get through this area. So it does seem like a valid --
Equally with the other streets too, they're the same -- have the same narrowness too, if that's a word. Thank you.
Any further discussion? My two cents, safety is paramount, so I'm going to be supporting this. No further discussions, clerk please take the roll.
Councilman Lee? Yes.
Councilman Stiches? Yes.
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 Yes. That brings us to Finance Committee, Chairman Stiches.
Yes, we have a number of items here. The first one having to do with the lease of the Pastory Center. I was not present for the discussion on that and Councilman Botts chaired the meeting, it's my understanding. So I think it would be better to have Councilman Botts talk on that one.
That sounds like a wonderful plan, Chairman Stiches. Councilman Botts, enlighten us, sir.
Thank you, Vice President. Does that mean I'm acting chair again?
You are acting chair for the next 35 seconds.
I don't know if this will ever happen again.
It won't. It'll get used to it, sir, it won't.
How about a filibuster?
During the meeting, Councilman Stiches had to leave. We still had a quorum, so I was voted acting chair. We did discuss this ordinance to renew the lease for the Pastory Center that was continued from the previous meeting. I believe it was discovered that, again, the school committee and the director for the YMCA were speaking. It was news to him that Bain was having an issue with getting access. He said they were perfectly welcome to use the facility as long as they, you know, spoke to each other, agreed upon whatever it is, the parameters involved. And given the fact that this is such a favorable lease for the city in terms of the Y running the Pastory Center, you know, we -- I don't believe we want to delay this any further. So this is voted in affirmative in committee.
Was it unanimous, Councilman Botts?
I don't believe it was. One nay, it was three to one.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made, second. Under discussion, Councilman Stiches, you have the floor.
Yes, I'd like to propose an amendment to the lease, Section 4.9. It's the no discrimination clause and it's a standard clause, talks about race, color, gender, creed, disability, or national origin. And I would like to propose an amendment that would add sexual preference.
Second.
To the --
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the amendment?
Councilman Stiches, where are you on the agreement?
At 4.9.
So to reiterate, it's to add sexual preference.
Thank you.
To the section.
Right, to the list of --
The list of things that we do have to discriminate against. Any discussion on the addition?
I'd like to ask the --
Councilman Favecchio?
Yeah, through the chair, I'd like to ask the Solicitor his opinion on whether we need it under the federal regulations that I mentioned, the Civil Rights Act.
I would just, if I could just respond with a comment that I wanted to first, I would say that this is a lease which has been negotiated between two parties, so an amendment to the lease is not really subject of council amendment. It's certainly something that if the council will, I can go back to the YMCA to see whether or not they would object to us inserting it into the lease. But normally, contracts negotiated by the administration and another unit are not subject to amendment by the council.
Are you satisfied, Councilman Favecchio?
Yeah, based on that, I, you know, I would say, I think we have a danger in delaying this. We've delayed it over a month, probably six or eight weeks, and I think we're running some risks here by not approving it. We could -- I don't see a problem with amending it.
If you would like to hold it, I could try to reach out to the director. I have his email here. I can try to get in touch with him quickly.
Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Can't we amend the ordinance, Section 1, 2, and 3, and add a Section 4 to it? If we can't touch the lease, we can touch the ordinance. We could put the wording right into the ordinance part at the beginning. I don't know if I could ask our councilor that.
I think both lawyers are looking it up now for you, Councilman. Wonderful idea.
Certainly, the council can amend any ordinance that's before it, of course. The problem that I have is that the ordinance itself implements a lease and if that language that the council wants is not in the lease itself, it may be just something that doesn't have any force and effect inside the lease itself. Because once the lease is approved, the terms of the lease speak and not the ordinance that approved it. Again, if the council would like, I could -- if you would hold this, I could try to reach out to the director of the YMCA and see if he can call me back in five or 10 minutes and see if he would object to that type of language being put in. I think it's worth a try to get this moving.
Councilman Santa Maria.
Mr. Vice President, can we make a motion to push it to the end, to give the council a time to contact YMCA?
Well, there's an amendment on the floor, and a motion and a second.
We have a motion on the floor, Sue. We have a motion on the floor, so I need to withdraw my second. I need to withdraw my second.
Councilman Arquette, I understand. I have a palmetary sitting to my left. Thank you. We have a motion and we have an amendment on the floor. I need Councilman Stiches to withdraw his amendment.
I'll withdraw, yes.
I'll withdraw the second.
Now I need someone to withdraw the motion on --
I think we just move the motion, this is Richard's motion to --
Just point of information, I seconded that amendment, so it wasn't Councilman Lucino, it was myself and I will withdraw my second.
Mr. Vice President, my motion is simple. Can we delay or push it to the end of the docket for 15 minutes or 20 minutes to give the council a chance to call YMCA?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, clerk please take the roll.
Councilman Lee? Yes.
Councilman Stiches? Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The school department is here with the superintendent. Could we possibly get an update on if there are any issues or if they were? Because we were getting it like third party, but since they're here, I think they can speak for themselves.
If they'd be willing to get up and talk about it?
Good evening, Judith Alston Superintendent. We have met with the Y. We have worked out an arrangement for Bain to use the gymnasiums during the morning sessions and we needed extra space. We've worked out with the director of the Y some afternoon programming for the Bain plus-two program, so we would fully support this lease with the city. And we thank you for your diligence on this matter.
Thank you, Dr. Alston.
You're welcome.
Moving on, I have nine fourteen oh two, Councilman Stiches.
Vice President for this.
Sorry, Acting Chair Botts.
Should I turn it back over to the chair now?
I'll give it back to you at the end.
It's a ping pong ball, Councilman.
This is the collective bargaining agreement for the teachers and it was unanimously recommended by the Finance Committee.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilman Stiches.
I think just that people felt the contract was very reasonable. It was a change in the health insurance cost share in the first year that was a cost, but there was no raise. And then in the second year, that first-year cost, the change to the health insurance, returned to the present system, which I believe is a 20 percent, flat 20 percent cost share, with a 2 percent raise in the third year, was the 2 percent raise with the 20 percent cost share. Those were the major provisions and we felt it was very reasonable, especially considering that the teachers have gone -- I think there was some disagreement whether it was five years or six years without a raise. So I would urge people to support this contract.
It's been six years, Councilman. Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, Vice President Farina. I also will support this contract. I'd like to say that the teachers have sacrificed a number of years and it's about time the city starts appreciating them. We -- they have done more with less over the last four or five years. I think it's a fair contract and it was the school department this year that saved over $3 million of city funds, so I want to commend the school department on that. Thank you.
Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Through the chair to Mr. Strom. Is he still here? Is Mr. Strom here? I noticed in your fiscal note, it's not in the same format that we're accustomed to, so I'm just wondering if the, you know, the total dollar cost over the length of the --
Well, Councilman, this fiscal note was provided by Mr. Balducci, not myself, okay? But yes, just to follow up on it, as was mentioned, you know, that the teachers haven't had a raise in six years. The only thing I wanted to point out that according to this fiscal note that was provided by Mr. Balducci, this comes to over a three-year period of $4 million, just short of $4 million of cost. So just keep that in mind. I mean, I -- okay, I'm in favor of this. I stated that in the committee meeting, but I just want the council to know when we negotiate other contracts, that this is a $4 million, three-year contract, okay?
Okay. Just one other comment too. I don't have a problem with the contract, I just thought that we needed to compare apples to apples. And the other thing is there are many more employees in the teachers' union than in some of the unions, so I think that it's not a bad contract, so I am going to vote in favor of it.
Any further discussion? I urge my committee members to pass that six years with no raise seems like a long time to go without a raise. So I'd like to thank the teachers who have gone six years without a raise to help offset the financial troubles of the city. With that being all, clerk please take the roll.
Councilman Lee? Yes.
Councilman Stiches?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I believe we have a resolution on the YMCA lease issue.
Yes, thank you, Vice President. I talked with Corey just on the phone right now, the director of the Y. He has no problem with that including in the lease. We can mark it tonight with the proposed language that he will not discriminate based upon, I believe I said, sexual preference or orientation. Did I have that right? Yes. He said he could not imagine him doing that, but if the city council wants it, he'll put it in.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Nine dash fourteen dash?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. Councilman Stiches, would you like to make your amendment?
I'd like to add, propose to amend Section 4.9 of the contract to add the words "sexual preference or orientation" to the list of reasons or list of items that are barred from discrimination.
Second.
Under discussion. Councilman Botts.
But didn't we just go through this? The council can't make that amendment? Evan's doing it right now, so.
We're doing it via ordinance.
Are we doing it via ordinance?
What I've done is to take Councilman Stiches' language, I've written it into this draft, I've initialed it, and I'm going to sign this copy and hand it to the clerk.
Thank you.
All right, eliminate the amendments. Would you please withdraw your amendment, Councilman Stiches?
Okay, so we're going to vote on essentially the lease as amended?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'll withdraw my motion.
All right, any further discussion on the lease as amended? There being none, clerk please take the roll.
Councilman Lee? Yes.
Councilman Stiches? Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, if there's another one, we know. We have nine fourteen dash oh four.
Oh three.
Oh three.
This is the teacher assistant bus aids unit. They are represented by the Cranston Teachers Alliance, but it's a different contract. The Finance Committee unanimously recommended approval of this agreement.
Motion to approve? I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Just one footnote, I know that we had discussions at the committee meeting, it was lengthy at times, but Mr. Balducci appeared and gave us some statistics. But this one does basically create, this contract and the next one actually basically create about a six-year window where these employees will probably see no increase whatsoever. Even though the salary rates increased, other things were taken away, so it probably will end up with six years, I think, with the zero.
Any further discussion on the contract? There being none, clerk please take the roll.
Councilman Lee?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm going to recuse on this one.
Yes.
The 9-14-4 is an ordinance ratifying another collective bargaining agreement for a small group of technical assistants. And I believe they primarily work with special needs, children.
Motion to have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Last one is back to Councilman Bots.
Okay, Acting Chairman Bots?
Yes, three times. All right. So this was voted, again, I think it was three to one, if I'm not mistaken, voted positive recommendation. I'll turn it over to the sponsor to give further background on it.
There was one nay. Acting Chair, there was one nay. I did vote against this.
I did say that.
Okay.
Motion to approve. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Under discussion through the sponsor of the ordinance.
Thank you, Council Vice President. This matter I brought up at the finance committee. This is something that came out of a meeting with Mr. Sakosho from a couple of years ago and then also more recently. One of the things that we do in the city is tax small businesses for office furniture, a computer and a printer. And the cost of our doing that, of assessing all of these offices, probably exceeds what we take in. We get, you know, $100 tax bills on small pieces of equipment. And it's more of a nuisance for small businesses and it's actually costly to the city. The tax assessor is not able to use his resources for other things. So the cost of this, we can adjust it. This is an attempt to try to delve into this area to make small businesses want to be in the city and continue to come into the city. I don't think it would cost that much. I know that Director Strom was going to try to do the fiscal note. Mr. Sakosho was away, so, you know, I think it's a great start to continue bringing businesses in. It's a small step. It's only on 10,000 of equipment, but I think it will save us money. We won't have to rehire one individual in the tax office, which probably costs about $65,000. So, but I would ask, you know, for Mr. Strom's opinion since he was looking at it over the last two weeks.
Director Strom.
Thank you, Councilman. What I was going to suggest, because Mr. Sakosho is away, the tax assessor, I was hoping if we could possibly defer this till he got back. I'm not opposed to this, but he sent me an email and he has some concerns about what the impact could be. I'll give you an example. Under 10,000 value would be $180,000 in tax dollars and would affect 1,253 accounts. 10,000 and under would be $188,000 in tax dollars and would affect 1,278 accounts. 5,000 and under would be 72,000 in taxes and approximately 800 accounts. In 5,000 value exemption across the board, up to 5,000 off every account, would be $343,000. I believe that in concept, I think this could be advantageous for the small business owner, but I do have some concerns. And I'd like to have further discussion on this with Mr. Sakosho as far as what type of impact it would have to our tax levy and how we would be able to make that up. Even if we have a clerk, that's only 60,000. I still have another 100,000 in tax dollars to be made. So I, if the council's not in a rush to approve it tonight, I would prefer if we could wait till Mr. Sakosho, when he returns. He'll be returning sometime the end of next week and we could have further discussion on this and proceed forward on it.
I have no problem with that. I want to make sure we get it right. Mr. Sakosho and I were the ones that discussed this originally, so...
So you don't have a fiscal note yet?
No, I wanted, I needed to speak to Mr. Sakosho.
Councilman Stychus and then Councilman Sito.
I think we need a, we obviously need a fiscal note and it needs to go with the ordinance so the public can see what the impact is. That was some interesting information that was presented. And I would, well, I was going to move to send it back to the finance committee, but other people have things to say, so I'll wait on that until...
Councilman Sito.
So my question to Director Strom is, you did a couple of breakpoints there. So you're saying that if we went with that $10,000 limit, approximately how much revenue would the city be losing?
If you went with under 10,000, it would be 180,000. If you included it at 10 as the ceiling and under, it would be 188.
But, I mean, I thought we were trying to encourage small businesses to come here and not make a burden on them. I mean, if that's a good number, if, and you're the director of finance, I mean, I'm comfortable with that number. I mean, it's not going to be more than that, you know? And it is something for the city where we can spur business. So I... I'll do whatever the rest of this council was, but I think the intent of that was to, you know,...
I mean, as you know, Councilman, in this tight budget that we had this year, you're saying that 180,000 doesn't mean and is not a factor in...
No, I'm not saying that, but we do have a surplus, so...
Well, that's last year. This is for this year. Last year is last year and this year we're in '15. You can't combine the two together unless you want to use some of your surplus money to offset it, which I wouldn't recommend. So I don't see why we can't wait another month to sit down with Mr. Sakosho. Maybe what we could do is have a meeting with Mr. Sakosho and a member or two of the council and really crunch the numbers and come up with a solution that we could present to the finance committee for their, you know, approval or disapproval.
Councilman Bots.
Thank you, Vice President. I believe during the meeting, we passed recommendation, a positive recommendation, but I think we were expecting a fiscal note this evening. And we don't really have one, so I would be open to moving or continuing until next time.
Yeah, based on the council rules, we cannot pass any fiscal notes, so we could not approve the passage this evening. But we're discussing it, so Councilman Arquette, you have the floor.
Thank you, Vice President Farina. I just want a couple of general comments. I understand the intent of the sponsors on this legislation. It's commendable, but in three consecutive years with no tax increase, next year is going to be a very difficult budget. I think there's going to be stresses on the budget next year. And I need, I think this ordinance or quasi-ordinance recommendation should be analyzed and dissected by the finance committee. I think we need a fiscal note from the tax assessor. And I would like to send it back to the committee to be further discussed. It's my recommendation.
Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Vice President. Yeah, just to go to what Councilman Sito said, my goal wasn't to tap into the reserves or anything. In talking to Mr. Sakosho, we were looking at maybe that $60,000 or $65,000 savings would reduce the amount we would actually spend to maybe 120 and that maybe we could find that somewhere else. But I certainly would like to get it right, so I don't have a problem with waiting. As much as I'd like to do it now, one more month won't hurt.
So if we could withdraw the, if anyone else has any comments before we draw the motion and a second? Councilman Stychus.
Well, I'd move to return this to the finance committee for the November meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, send it back to the finance committee, awaiting further fiscal due diligence. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Acting Councilman Bots, it's all you, buddy. Acting Chair Bots.
That's right.
Your one shot at greatness, sir.
All right, I believe Chairman Stychus was not here for the, or were you here for the abates? Were you here for the abates?
I was.
All right, so resolution authorizing real estate intangible tax abatements.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
A resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Yes. Councilwoman Lee, you now have the floor.
I'm just recording the settled claims for informational purposes only.
Okay, we have the docket claims. They're there for your listening pleasure and they are for informational purposes only.
So I will read through each and every one, okay? Antonio Gomez received $2,050 for vehicle damage. Rigo's auto body for Alex Suarez, $2,939.96 for vehicle damage. That was a big one. Catherine Hogan, $165.30 for vehicle damage. Ann Lewis, $231.48 for vehicle damage. Marissa Anne Farre, $89.97 for vehicle damage. Jeremy A. Dexter, $300 for vehicle damage. Nancy Petra, $134.04 for vehicle damage. Mark Quilden, $138.04 for vehicle damage. Joseph Esposito, $300 for vehicle damage. A lot of vehicles.
A lot of vehicle damage. Thank you, Councilwoman Lee. Now we're up to public hearings on any matter. So Mr. Tomlin, if you'd like to get up and continue, I apologize for making you wait, but got to follow the rules.
Once again, Richard Tomlin's 400 Farmington Avenue. I'd like, I didn't before, but I'd like to congratulate everybody who was involved in all these school contracts. They don't fall out of the sky. And a lot of people had their hands in there. Mostly, the word I like to use, mostly, I think it was an honorable conclusion to a long, drawn-out contract. And all those involved should be congratulated. If I'm going to say a word or two on what you will have under discussion very seriously is the police situation. I'm going to meet with the union myself tomorrow just to get more of a feel of a lot of things. They're not going to tell me much, but that's okay. It's a human basis situation, I think. As I said to them, and I know every council member is aware of this, I think everybody in the administration is, if you have 152 policemen, which I believe is the number, you may have 10 at the most that got involved in whatever the cabal was. And I think all these years, and it's been years that they've been under this cloud because there's been no report. We all know why there's no report. We all know there could have been a report. We all can guess what's in the report. And we think it's, Captain Barry promised me face-to-face that it would be a very thorough report and I would be pleased with it. I don't know what that means. I don't know why he'd even think I would be pleased with it, but I think coming from him, it's trying to tell us that they really went into every single detail that they possibly could, including the situation, as we all know, with the captain, which is going to open up a floodgate of money that we're going to have to pay out. I don't think any reasonable person can possibly understand when Captain Barry eliminated all those charges, 11 of them, if you will. And then you have the tapes. The tapes can be argued in the court from what I read in the papers and trying to understand them. Both the prosecution and the defense is going to be able to use those tapes somewhat to their own benefit. But I think the final balance is going to be, and as I keep saying, we have not reserved at all. We know pretty much now by trying to force the issue what our cost may be on the lawyer's side, but we haven't reserved. We haven't used good accounting practices that says if there's a probability of any one of those suits that the city is now faced with from anybody, but particularly the police department, you're supposed to reserve. The thing is, if we reserve for them, we wouldn't be showing a profit. And we all know why we want to show a profit this year. But your job is, I don't, I just want to say publicly, your job is going to be very difficult to get in there and go back, discuss 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, and then try to come to, I guess what you might say, an honorable conclusion. Because as many of them, we all know, a lot of policemen, we all know that the majority are out there doing their job day in and day out. And for having this cloud over them, it's not a nice way to work for anybody. The human element of that means that they're out there working, that they don't know when the next shoe is going to stop, drop. But again, all I can say is I wish you well. You've got a tough job ahead of you, but I think you're up to it. You've certainly been involved up to this point in many issues, many discussions that, of course, I'm not privy to. So I think you'll get off to a good start and with some good faith on both sides, I think I'll be able to stand up here and congratulate you for a job well done. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Any? Come on up. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Thank you. Ralph Cianci, 130 Village Avenue, Cranston. I'm here tonight to talk about the trash use fee that the city has for the $150 for the second barrels. If you do a little bit of simple math, you take the $966,000 that's budgeted and you take that and divide that by roughly 30,000 households that we have here in the city, you would get to $32.20 per household for the cost of the tipping fee paid to Rhode Island Resource. Then take that and again, divide it in half, okay? And that's the number of barrels that we have out there. So it's $16.10 per barrel. Why is it that the city is charging $150 to every household that wants extra barrels? And what they're saying is that, the administration is saying that it's for the tipping fees to Rhode Island Resource. Doesn't make sense. Rhode Island Resource is only charging you roughly 16 and Waste Management is pocketing the difference. So I don't think that the contract was ever really looked at correctly. If you look at it a different way, you take the 30,000 households, multiply it times the $150 for each barrel, you've got 4.5 million. Take that and double it, assuming that every single resident or household in the city ordered two additional barrels, one green, one blue. You've got $9 million that would be going to Rhode Island Resource. The budget in the city for waste removal is 5.1 million. Again, it does not make sense why we are charging the people in this city $150 per barrel. And the other thing is that when you look at what the savings was, everybody keeps talking about $130,000 worth of savings. Savings is roughly $5 per household. So call once to have a bulky item picked up? Question mark. Thank you.
Point of information, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cianci is correcting his analysis, except, Mr. Cianci, the city isn't charging that $150. Waste Management is, so the check gets made to Waste Management and not to city. So just, you know, so you know, which is an indirect tax anyways, but that's another story.
This is not for open discussion, if you have a specific point of information?
Point of information?
Okay.
Just like the point that the council never approved that contract. I believe Mr. Cianci's remark saying the contract was never really looked at, so it was not the council that... Council...
I have none.
There are none. That is closed. Report of city official, city officers. I have a standing monthly report cited in properties in the city from Councilman Botts to the administration.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. You're the first one to call me president, I appreciate that.
It's kinda like Air Force One. The plane is not Air Force One until the president is up there. Whoever sits in that seat is the president.
Thank you, Director Barone.
Okay, Mr. President, I was able to dispense of a report provided to me by the building inspector. I left it over there, I don't know if the clerk handed it out to everyone. What this, what this report does, the top, the top portion of the report lists all the permits that were issued for different types of construction. Building, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, sewer, and zoning. Those are the total permits that were issued. The bottom portion of the report are minimum housing violations, and this is for, the first column is for the month of August 2014, and the second column is a running total from, for July and August. Now, these reports could be available monthly if the council requests, and if you do have any other, if you wanna make some adjustments to this, if there's other information that you may require, just let me know, and I can forward that to the building inspector. But I don't know if this is exactly what Councilman Botts was looking for.
Councilman Botts, is this exactly what you were looking for?
Not exactly, but it's a start. So, but I, before I get to what I was looking for, I have just a question. So on minimum housing, it has complaints received, so that's calls that have come in, or either through someone from the public, or someone, or maybe a council member, or something like that?
Or even the minimum housing officer noticing himself.
All right, so that's total, all right, I see. And then, and then, because, for instance, dwelling structures property says 102, so that could be multiple violations on the same, same address? Is that why that number would be higher?
That's correct.
Okay. So the only other thing is, I was just looking for something that broke it down by, if we can include addresses on here. Even better is if we could break it down by ward and then address. Just so, I wanted informational, just so I could see what properties are being cited in my ward, so that if someone calls complaining that there's a particular house that's unsightly, unkempt, whatever, that we, I could look at this report and say, well, yeah, that house has been cited, but I'll look into it and see when it was cited, how that's being played out, versus, well, you know, I don't know, I'll email Director Barone and find out about it. So I was just looking for addresses. And even so, you know, for our own benefit, like you said, if someone from inspections is out and they happen to see a property on their own, well, same here, if I'm out driving around, or out on the trail and see a particular house that looks, looks like it could be cited, that, you know, we could refer the list and see if it's on there. So that's the only reason, you know, addresses, if you can do it by ward, that would even be better, so.
Okay. Do you want me to, do you need the information on the building permits that were issued? Can I eliminate that?
Sure.
I will forward that first thing in the morning.
Thank you. Councilman Steikos.
That's what the top is, is the building permits?
Yes, sir.
So a zoning permit, what is that?
Probably a zoning change. I'm not, I'm not sure.
Well, that seems like, even for our zoning board, that seems like a high number.
Could we get an answer emailed to the council?
I will. And let, I don't know, the clerk, looks like she knows what she's doing.
Through the chair, those zoning permits are issued by the zoning department to applicants for different reasons. Say someone comes in and applies for a license, with that application, they also need to obtain a zoning permit that the property is properly zoned for that use.
Oh, okay.
And they're also issued when someone wants to file a trade name certificate, that the use of the property that the business is operating out of is zoned for that.
Are you satisfied, Councilman Steikos?
I am. I mean, I don't have any need for that, I don't know if anyone else does, but.
Chair recognizes Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, President. Yeah, I wanna commend my colleague, Councilman Botts, I think this is a fabulous idea. I would like a follow-up, as Councilman Botts has recommended, if we can have it broken down by ward and addresses, I think that would be fabulous. For, maybe extend it for June to June 1st to...
He's gonna provide that on a monthly basis with a running total on the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you, that can be done, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Any, I'm assuming that's closed, everybody good on that? Okay. I have Executive Communications, report on hiring of special counsel, consultants, et cetera.
Thank you, Mr. President.
No problem. Thank you.
Cranston Fire Captain Richard Verdar has requested to be continued in service for one year. Captain Verdar has met all the necessary requirements, and we urge your approval.
Motion to approve. I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Lee, yes. Councilman Steikos?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Council President Communications. This may be the only time I ever get to do this. Elections are a funny thing. But the 2014 election is next Tuesday. I have to say, regardless of our differences, of how we may feel, this is a very productive council, and I'm sad that Council President Lanny isn't here for me to hear me say that. We may differ on things, we may not agree on everything, but we had a very effective two years. I look forward to working with all of you in the future, regardless of where it may be. I'm hopeful it's here. Some of you, some of you I'd like to see leave, but, you know, we'll let the public try to figure out who's who. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for a productive two years. So I have the first item on council member communications, as I'm usually a council member. Status of Molly Drive on the paving list. We had some constituents complain, just wondering where it was.
Okay. This road is on the paving list to be paved.
It was actually on Friday, Ken Mason drove by. Also, his concern with Molly Drive was Cambio Court, which runs into it. So basically, he is pushing to pave Molly Drive, Cambio Court. There's another, another road that connects.
Yeah, there's another road in the Platteville.
He wants, he feels it would be more cost efficient and cost effective to pave all three at one time. So obviously, the paving program is done for the year, and it's gonna be re-looked at again. But if there, and this, this goes for any of the roads that maybe, you know, you wanted to get paved. We may be able to patch it to get us through the winter. So if you do have something like that, I know I'm gonna regret saying this, but feel free to call me, and I will have someone take a look at it and see if patching would help.
Yeah, the residents' concern was that the road itself was deteriorating, Cambio Court, all three streets in there, they didn't have a binder coat, I mean, they were just a binder coat, and literally, they fixed one of the holes about 15 times, so to your point, it's not gonna be cost effective. So thank you for looking into it, Director Barone.
You're welcome.
Councilman Steikos, you have the floor, sir.
I did receive a memo about this, developing the walking trail between Hope Road and Late Night Road. I received it from the, written by the Director of Planning, saying that he's been busy, and he plans to meet this coming month to begin design of the trail. I just note that, I'd like to thank Mr. Cordy for, for meeting we, me, meeting with me about this, and I believe, Jerry, we met on this on May 14th, just to let you know how long the planning department has been busy.
If I may through the chair?
You may.
Okay.
Director, you may.
I appreciate your patience on this, Councilman, but the fact of the matter is, the planning department is operating at 50% of the staff that they had just four years ago. So yes, they are very busy. I did see that memo, and it looks to me, as though Mr. Lapola has made a commitment that he is going to be meeting with those people.
And I'm sure other people, council members, feel the same way, but it would be, be very good if, if, if things like that come up, if the directors could call us, or there'd be communication with us saying, we've got a problem, it's gonna take a little time, but what happens instead is that we don't hear anything, and that really brings me to my next item, which I apologize for taking the council's time up with a "clean up after your dog" sign, but this one I've been after since June, and it's just very frustrating to not hear. I did hear, Mr. Barone sent me a design of the sign, which was, you know, fine, but...
Councilman, that sign was installed on October 23rd.
Magnificent. Okay, good. I also, moving on to more important matters that aren't on the agenda, but we did exchange emails about a meeting about rats in Taft Street and Westwood, and do we have any possibility for a date for that?
I just have to reach out to Steve Acabucci, and, and the three of us, or four of us can meet.
Great, okay. And so should be hearing from you sometime this week?
Yes.
Okay. And any developments on the announcement of the tree planting program?
We just approved the advertisement for it, and we're ready to go.
Good, so that will appear in the Herald?
It's gonna appear in the Herald, it'll try, we'll try to get it on the patch, and also on our website.
Terrific. Okay. Very good. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Arquette, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Farina. Yes, a few, several, well, more than several, but yeah, I wanna, would like to convey to Mr. Barone the status on these requests. I've had the first, 762 Dyer Avenue, there's a bundle of mattresses there, they've been there for quite a while. There's an empty blue dumpster, and they're hidden behind the dumpster in the, in the yard there, and I've called inspections several times, and I've made them aware for the last four months, and I'd like to know the status of that, Mr. Barone.
Just give me one second, let me find my notes, please.
Just so you know, that's the first home individuals would see if they're driving from Providence into Cranston. It's the corner of Dyer and Farmington, and that's the first residence they would see, and it's an appalling sight. So I hope we can get someone over there, take those mattresses out of there.
I know inspections went out there, and they found that the mattresses, it was not a violation because the mattresses were not curbside, they were leaning up against the house, but a, oh, here it is right here, a letter was sent to the property owner on 10/20 to resolve that issue. Technically, it's not a violation, as the mattresses are not located curbside, they're leaning up against the house, and not in the right way.
Some are laying on the ground. Is this, there's no ordinance that says I can leave five abandoned mattresses in my yard?
That's correct.
I yield to Councilman Steikos.
I believe there's a, there's an ordinance that says you have to keep your yard...
Tidy.
Neatly maintained or something.
The house has been, the house has been violated, notified of the violation.
Thank you, Councilman. Second, the status on a request I made at least four weeks ago, 190 Farmington Avenue, a resident has adopted about 25 cats, and they're annoying the neighbors, it is a health issue.
Yep, you brought that to my attention four weeks ago, and I gave you the report, I believe, the same day, but I'll give it to you again. Animal Control is gonna out there set traps. The resident at that address keeps letting the cats out of the traps, 'cause he doesn't want them trapped. So the animal control officer told him that if he does it again, he'd be, he'd be fined.
Okay, I did get a call from Pat today, she said she was out there and set a couple of traps.
So you talked to Pat?
I didn't talk to she's up to me, but I know she's been out there, which is a good thing.
Please.
Request on the chain link fence at Gladstone.
Yes.
A portion has been repaired, but I would say majority, about 60%, is still in its original form, which is broken, which is rusted, which is in terrible need of repair. And there's a large hole in one section where elementary school children could get access to a ledge there, there's, there's a dangerous situation. What is the administration doing about that?
They're gonna repair that hole.
And we have a timeframe with that?
No, I have to let him know tomorrow.
Okay.
He, he didn't wanna repair because he felt that because the kids keep going through it to cut through, there is no ledge, that they would cut it again.
I played there as a child.
So I will have it done tomorrow, I will, I will bring it to his attention tomorrow.
Next is, I'm getting calls from seniors and walkers at Bain Track, they're complaining that a section of the track, the section that, that parallels the school, Bain School, there's a route that's uprooting the asphalt, and, and people are tripping on that track. If we could get someone from Recreation there and address that, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Residents from Arlington Manor have called me three times complaining that when they leave their manor to walk to Aldi's, the store, they, they can't walk on the sidewalk at Franklin because there's overgrown brush and shrubs they're walking in the street. Now, in eight days, there'll be an election, Arlington Manor is a voting precinct, and I'd hate to have residents walking to the precinct, there's gonna be a lot of traffic there. People, I mean, that's one of the major, major polling places in Ward 3, so we really need to address this before November 4th, to cut that overgrowth back so people can use the sidewalk.
I emailed you that also, Councilman, that has been cut.
Okay, and if you're familiar with my area, we have Bracken and Argyle running to Brown Street. Beyond Brown Street is that ledge I'm alluding to with Gladstone, and people there live on a dead end, and they are disposing of items that don't fit in the trash barrels, they're disposing of chairs and mattresses and other debris. And that area, I'm getting calls from residents at Jennings Manor, who look out at their third, fourth, fifth floor apartment residents complaining about the junkyard that is accumulating at the dead ends of Argyle and Bracken Street, due to, people don't wanna pay that $18 to have Solid Waste Management collect their items in their dumping. So has the administration checked that out at all?
Yes, there's no evidence of recent dumping. The end of Bracken Street will have a "no dumping" sign there.
All right, thank you. And the last is, just as I was campaigning, I ran across 184 Chandler Avenue, that I think the house is in foreclosure, and the owner or the bank, Real Estate, is Remax, and they haven't cut the loan in about four or five weeks, and we need to address that.
I also emailed you on that, Councilman, that's gonna be cut this week.
I checked my email at 10:00 this morning, so did you email me after 10:00 AM?
I may have.
Okay, well, I'll see that tomorrow. Thank you very much, Councilman Barone.
Should we come up with a better source of communication? Because every one of your issues, you email the results. Now, I don't know why you keep asking me this, if I'm emailing you the results.
Well, when I request you to look into something at 762 Dyer Avenue, it's been four months, and we can't come to a solution, I, I need to have my constituency... All right, thank you. And the last is, just as I was campaigning, I ran across 184 Chandler Avenue, that I think the house is in foreclosure and the owner or the bank, real estate, is RE/MAX, and they haven't cut the lawn in about four or five weeks, and we need to, to address that.
I also emailed you on that, Councilman, that's going to be cut this week.
I checked my email at 10:00 this morning, so did you email me after 10:00 AM?
I may have.
Okay, well, I'll see that tomorrow. Thank you very much, Councilman Barone.
Should we come up with a better source of communication, because every one of your issues, you email the results. Now, I don't know why you keep asking me this if I'm emailing you the results.
Well, when I request you to look into something at 762 Dyer Avenue, it's been four months and we can't come to a solution, I, I, I need to have my constituency know that I'm working on problems that are happening in my ward.
I don't have anything at 762 Dyer Avenue, Councilman.
Excuse me?
I don't have anything at 762 Dyer Avenue.
I emailed you that.
I have 362 Dyer, is that 362 Dyer Avenue? Is that 362 Dyer Avenue?
762.
You emailed me.
762, 762.
Okay, is that the mattresses?
Yes.
Okay.
And my understanding from Mr. Picocci at 190 Farmington, he, I, I found out with the cats about maybe four weeks ago when I advised you about it, he said he had called the administration the last five months. So that, that's another ongoing problem in my ward, and when this continues, I'm going to take it to the people. I'm just going to, just make, you know, make you aware what's going on in Ward 3.
Well, if he, if he keeps letting the cats out of the, of the traps, it's very difficult for them to do their job.
Don't let the cat out of the... Councilman Aceto was all set, he told me before he left he was good, he thanks the administration for their work on these three matters. The floor goes to Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President, for tonight. First, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the Police Department for handling the scare issues at the schools. I think that, I saw the cars out in front of most of the schools, and I think it really calmed everyone's fears, and they really got, I received a lot of good feedback from constituents as they walked the neighborhoods, and so I want to commend them for the way they handled that. I also had an issue with the dog, dog problem, and I want to thank Director Barone for taking care of that rather quickly. The Capuano Drive issue, this is something that I've been working on, and this may, I know that Councilman Botts and Councilman San Maria have been interested in this. The, I talked, I talked to Solicitor Marcela today, and we're going to, we're still trying to come up with a plan as how to speed up the process. This is the, one of the ones with the lien that's been there for almost two years, and it's building every day, but the bank doesn't seem to care. So I thought we might be able to do a condemnation, but there are some issues with that, that liability for the city being one of them. So we're, we're going to have some ongoing discussions, and I'll be happy to, to work with the solicitors on this, since it's in my bailer wick. But we still don't have a resolution, we're just looking for some novel way to proceed against these violators that just ignore us, mostly the abandoned properties issues. And the last one is Poplar, this is one that I've been working on as well. I guess I'm not going to be able to use the Tree Council, any of the Tree Council money because that has a certain designation and most of the money is already earmarked, so I've been in discussions with Attorney Murray on behalf of the developer in that Garden City complex, you know, the apartment complex, and we're going to, still going to try to find a, a way to get some trees over there. Hopefully, Mr. Murray's client will, will assist us. And that's it.
Councilman San Maria, I apologize you were not on the docket in front of me.
No apology needed.
When you run citywide, sometimes you get forgotten about.
Okay. Midvale, 81 Midvale, I talked to Evan today, and he graciously gave me the number to Rhode Island Housing. We told them of the situation, Halloween's coming up in three days, and the police tape and the, and the branch is not going to do it. So they are willing to go down there tomorrow and look at something more structurally to keep people away from the place. They have sold the mortgage to Rhode Island Veterans Association, Rhode Island Veterans, and told them of the severity of the situation, and hopefully we get a resolution. The demolition report is still in effect, but now with the transfer of the mortgage, it's just slowed it down a bit. But they've given me all assurance that by Friday, there'll be something more...
What happened technically is that the, the homeowners signed a deed in lieu of foreclosure, which, which sped up the process a little bit because the lender didn't have to foreclose. The problem with it now is that it's out of Rhode Island Housing's hands, and the, the mortgagie is the VA. So now we have to go through the VA process to get this house knocked down.
Okay, so I'd like to put this on next month's docket if I could, Mr. Vice President.
You may.
Also, I have, I'm sorry.
Is it related, Councilman Stychos?
Yes. Could you, could you say what you just said about the process, I didn't understand?
Sure. Rhode Island Housing was involved somehow through assistance or whatnot, but the main mortgage holder was the VA because both mortgageors were veterans. So what happened thereafter was not, they stopped paying the mortgage, both of them being overseas. So Rhode Island Housing sent them something called a deed in lieu of foreclosure. So of course, a foreclosure is a process in which the lender gets title to the house. So the homeowners signed a deed granting the mortgagie an interest, whatever interest they had in the house, to the mortgagie.
So it's kind of like they pleaded nolo?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so...
So basically, they said it's your problem now. The problem that Richard was told today and I was told the other day was, it's out of the Rhode Island Housing's hands, and the deed went to the veterans.
But if you ask Rhode Island Housing, they're willing to, even though they're transferring it, fix the problem for the time being. So they, they don't have to, but they're going to...
I, I think my, in talking with Mr. McDermott, I think he's very cooperative, it's just, you know, whenever, whenever you deal with the federal government, and two people that own the house overseas, it's not as quick as everyone would like it.
Can I continue, I have a couple of new ones. Evan, while you're up there, could, can we get a quick status on the Ward 6 lawsuit that, about the redistricting? And also, I would like to, the second question is, Patrick Snow and Han is $360 an hour, while everybody else is hovering around 100, 150, is there a reason why they're double the hourly rate? Two questions.
My hourly rate is $3.60, so let me turn this over to Bob.
I know what you're going to tell me, that they are specialized and, and they have to charge more money because they're a specialized group, right? Is that what you're saying?
They are a specialized group in pensions, that is correct.
Okay.
And without their services, we would have not had our 401A approved by IRS, which has to be done every year, by the way.
Okay.
Okay?
And then the status of the Ward 6 lawsuit, could you, just quickly, I just, I know we had a motion to dismiss and that was denied, so I want to know where we were on that.
I think there was an upcoming conference with the court. I don't think that that conference has happened yet, but I'll inquire and get back to the council as to what, what exactly is going on with that case.
Thank you. And Jeff, I have two for you that I didn't talk to you about and you didn't email me on, so I'm going to just swing them by you now if I could?
As long as I can follow up with an email?
Yeah, you can follow up with an email. Farm Street, I just don't, need to know where they are on the paving list, Farm, F-A-R-M.
I believe he was requesting you follow up with an email with him, Councilman.
I, I thought you wanted me to like fix something, but I, I have a list.
Okay, and also, the bike path behind Hong Kong Buffet has a hole in it, the fence has a hole in it, it's become a dumping ground for, well, I guess mattresses, tires, and beer bottles, so I was wondering if...
I'll have boxing rec take a look at that. What was, Farm Street, you said?
Yes, sir, and that will do it for me.
While we're waiting, I'd like the record to show...
You can wait.
It's okay, wait for him to get it, I got to make a little statement, and we're killing time. I just took the first ever Council President selfie, so I need the record to show that because it's never happened before. History, I mean, history. No one finds that funny at all?
Councilman, I don't see it on the list, so I have to have someone go by, Farm Street?
Okay. You could have told me tomorrow or next month, just wanted to know where it is on the paving list.
Well, when you, when you email me tomorrow, I'll probably already have an answer for you.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Councilman Botts has had his hand up first, Councilman.
Thank you, Council President. Clearly, you don't subscribe to Council Lanny's Instagram.
I don't think Council President Lanny knows of Instagram.
All right. I just have a few items that I didn't get in prior to the docket being finalized, and I will go back to the old docket from last time. I just wanted a status report on Ross, Ross Square. I know Director Mason said for the past two meetings that it's going to get done, and with the missing bricks in the crosswalks, and I noticed we, we're doing some other stuff with signage and, and painting some crosswalks, but, I mean, it is unsightly. Do you have any, I mean, you can follow up with an email if, if you'd like, or...
Through the chair. Councilman, we just held interviews last week to replace the Mason's position.
Oh.
And hopefully, we'll have him on board within the next 10 days.
Okay, all right, thank you. The other two items, I, I talked to Director Mason about two street signs that were missing, one at the corner of Preston and Reservoir, and one at the corner of Beckwith and Reservoir. And it's been about probably three weeks, and hearing that "Clean Up Your Dog" sign got installed, I, I would give priority to street signs, especially coming off of Main, Main Street. So if I could, if I could get a follow-up email on that, from someone in the, so, street signs at the, at Reservoir and Preston, and Reservoir and Beckwith are missing?
Yes.
And I, I told Director Mason that probably about three weeks ago, and...
They, they both have work orders on them.
Okay, great. And then, and was it, did you, I know I contacted regarding that area, Providence Water staging area, did you hear back from Providence Water at all?
I did not, I did not.
Because it looks like they've added more debris since then, and it, and again, that area, besides that, just the grass being uncut and whatever, it looks very unsightly, so. And the other thing is, you know, we look forward to the new traffic pattern on October 29th, and what surprises that'll bring, so with the eggs at closing.
I think it'll be better.
Yes, so thank you.
I'm not an engineer.
Any other council member communications? Oh, Councilman Arquero, I forgot about you.
Just a general comment, I, I think we made history twice with having Republican Don Botts chairing finance, and Vice President Freina doing an outstanding job tonight here coordinating the meeting. I'm just like to generally comment, I'm saying, I'm glad that Council Botts can call directors, but I have to bring things to the light of Mr. Barone because I can't call directors. Thank you.
Before we move on to old business and new business under council member communications, I just want to wish Council President Lanny's wife a speedy recovery. We all know and appreciate and love Lois Lanny, and we are all hopeful that she has a speedy recovery, and any issues she has are overcome. So I'm asking you, and anyone happens to watch this on Channel 3, for your prayers for Council President Lanny's wife. Thank you. Any old business?
I have none.
On to the new business.
Proposed ordinance 10-14-01, an amendment of Title 5.12 of the Code of the City of Cranston 2005, entitled alcoholic beverages licenses for alcohol expansion permit renewals, to be referred to Safety Services for hearing on November 10th. Proposed ordinance 10-14-02, an amendment of Title 10.32 of the Code of the City of Cranston 2005, entitled motor vehicles in traffic for Sharon and Holly. A three-way stop to be referred to ordinance for hearing on November 13th. Proposed ordinance 10-14-03, an amendment of Title 10.32 of the Code of the City of Cranston 2005, entitled motor vehicles in traffic. A four-way stop for Edgewood Avenue and Edge Street, to be referred to ordinance for hearing on November 13th. Proposed ordinance 10-14-04, an amendment titled 10.32 of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled motor vehicles in traffic for Wine Street, one-way traffic between 2:00 to 3:00 PM Monday through Fridays, to be referred for hearing before ordinance on November 13th. Proposed ordinance 10-14-05, an amendment of Chapter 17 of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled zoning, a change of zone for 1255 Cranston Street, to be referred to ordinance for hearing on December 4th. Proposed ordinance 10-14-06, ratifying school committee's collective bargaining agreement with Rhode Island Laborers District Council Local 1322 for bus drivers and mechanics unit, to be referred to finance for hearing on November 13th. Proposed ordinance 10-14-07, ratifying the school committee's collective bargaining agreement with Rhode Island Laborers District Council Local 1322 for tradespeople unit, and to be referred to finance for hearing on November 13th. Proposed ordinance 10-14-08, an amendment of Title 8.12 of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled garbage, rubbish, et cetera, creating trash amnesty dates, to be referred to Public Works for hearing on November 10th. A request from National Grid for new pole location at East Hill Drive to be referred to Public Works on November 10th, and the following claims to be referred to Claims Committee for hearing on November 10th. Property damaged, there are two property damage claims from Kimberly Yay, one from alleged incident on September 3, 2014, and the other from an incident on August 31, 2014. Property damage claim of Vincent De Amber from alleged incident on August 13, 2014. Property damage claim from Patricia Romano from alleged incident on September 3, 2014. Personal injury claim of Joseph Rose from alleged incident on August 5, 2014. Any property damage claim from Teresa Wood from alleged incident on September 2, 2014. I have no other new business.
So moved. Second. Take a roll.
That's the second?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, President Freina. Yes, I'd like to advise the clerk if I could co-sponsor 10-14-08, if you add my name to that ordinance, and also, I'd like a ruling from the parliamentarian. I'd like a ruling. I'd like a ruling from the parliamentarian. There's an individual in the chamber with a political button, I know political buttons are not allowed at the schools, but I don't know if they're allowed in the chamber here, I don't know what the status is.
I think they would be allowed in the chamber.
Okay, fine, I just wanted a ruling, thank you, thank you.
The trash amnesty?
I just figured I...
At some point, we're all going to ask...
I, 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 I just wanted to push the issue, hopefully.
Thank you, all right, so any of the citizens for a test?
There is none.
I'll adjourn.
So moved.
The second.
Second.
Seven.
Hi. Hey, Nick. What is it, 50 or 40? Hey, I...